Okay, we should be live on YouTube. There you go. Give it a second, it just went live. Our finals are very.
Well, actually my time. It's like which.
I think. Could be close.
Which part? If it's me. I think there's anything that I need to be careful with. Right opening, right? I'm not gonna be very long. Cory won't be here tonight, he's having a baby.
Oh.
He's not having a baby.
Congratulations.
You know why these numbers are extended? Because this is the F E B. And this is the F T. So. So no.
No, I don't.
And that was the numbers. Lisa, the numbers that you sent out in that email were different than the numbers, that final count, is it because there was an adjustment in that Friday count again?
Is that your F T?
It went from.
What are you looking at?
From four hundred.
Yeah, this one, and it had gone to four oh one.
Yes.
And then it went to three.
The annual budget package has it as three nine.
That's F T E.
They both say F T E.
Yeah, okay, so. I can't, I can't answer.
There was an adjustment.
Yeah.
On the revenue limit worksheet. It's done by the.
Here, I'll show you what I'm looking at.
What's F T in?
It's a number of hours.
Let's see.
Full time enrollment. So like if a kindergartner is here for half a day, they come as a half F T.
Okay, and this is what we got.
No, but in other schools where they have half days or the four Ks or five hours or that kind of thing.
Same. This is what we got at the last meeting. This is what.
I was thinking those numbers.
I saw that too, and I saw it was different, I was like.
But those numbers, having some dropping, I also wondered, we didn't have summer school, and those numbers count towards half. Half the numbers of summer school can count towards your.
So this is the progress of the number.
So numbers in the past that might have been a touch higher may have been because we were also including summer school numbers.
Which are, because they aren't sold. Just like double.
Yes, but the summer school, I believe, you can take fifty percent of those enrolled in summer school accounted for. My health number. And it gives you a boost.
Oh, when that.
It is, I don't know if it's state law.
Okay.
You can count summer school kids.
Yes.
As half.
Yes, but we didn't have summer.
No, but I wonder if it's different because years now, because also we have summer. If they're like, if they're numbers, that might be.
Yeah, I'm not gonna assume that.
It's five oh four, so we're going to call the regular school board meeting. Monday, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of liberty. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and.
Thank you all. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Polly, signed by Jamie. Um, I would like to put forth the amendment that the three items enclosed be brought into open. Because I believe we already discussed those. Unless anyone sees a reason, they need further discussion enclosed.
We just want to do a proof.
Okay, that's what we're saying. That's fine.
All right. So. Motion as it stands is approve the agenda with the closed items being put into open. And they will be put under the new business. As. Sorry.
D E.
D E and F. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. At this time, we're looking at accepting a donation from Crescent Lake Community Outreach. For ten thou- or for, sorry, I wish, sorry, my bad. Thousand dollars, uh, this is from the Crescent Lake Church Group. It's for four K playground equipment, snack items for students, sweatpants and coats, and miscellaneous school supplies.
I'll make a motion to accept that donation.
I'll second that.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Jamie, all those in favor, say aye, aye.
I, who is that?
The Crescent Lake Church Group is a group, is a group of churches out in the A and H area.
Very nice.
And they come together every year and have donated a thousand to us, so.
We're at Crescent Lake. Nice.
Very welcome. Uh, next is a donation from the South Fork Sporting Club. In the amount of one thousand ninety two dollars thirteen cents. And this is for the Siren School Trap Team.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Um, we'll go with a motion by Polly, signed by Amy.
Why does this one say it doesn't need approval?
What, it's in an activity account?
Oh, we'll still approve it and show our appreciation. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Yet again, a very thankful donation towards our student activities. And last but certainly not least for donations at this point is a monthly donation from the community supporting teachers group.
This month's winner for that, um, for that, from that group is, uh, Shannon Webster, and she won cash that was donated by the Knoll family and their business Burnett County Land.
That is awesome, congratulations Shannon, and thanks to the Knoll family. It was very much appreciated. Look forward to hearing more and more of these.
So we need a motion to accept it? Be thorough, so I'll make the motion to accept the donation from the Knoll family. I'll second that.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Jamie, all those in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on. Yet again, huge thanks to all those who are helping to support the students and their community. Do we have any comments from the public this evening? Okay. Um. Let's see here. Hmm, the board has opted out of a public comment period at the school board meetings. Each commenter is limited to a maximum of three minutes for the commenter's remarks. Although those can be deferred by another speaker if they would choose to do so. The period shall be limited to ten individual speakers or extend to for thirty actual minutes, whichever limitations permits the greatest total number of speakers. Each commentator shall be identified by the commentator's name, place of residence, whether the commentator has a student or students currently enrolled in the district and or is a staff person in the district. Comments must be directed solely to the board and or designated and must not address other members of the audience during this part of the meeting. The board during the public comment period will not discuss the agenda issues raised by the public commentator, but may discuss such agenda items at the conclusion of the public comment period. All individuals who comment during the public comment period are reminded that the information provided this evening is intended to provide information to the board so that it can fulfill its role. In receiving public comment, the board encourages commentators to engage in civil discourse that models character and ethical behavior. In that vein, all parties are reminded that all information offered be truthful and honest. False statements or stigmatizing charges may subject the individual making such statements to legal repercussions, including, but not limited to defamation claims. Other specific procedures for the public comment period not mentioned herein can be found in board policy. Now, who would like to go first? Uh, we have a public commentary up here, sorry, you can't, might not see the sign from back there, but if you come up here, that'd be great.
Oh, okay, just sit then or stand.
Whatever you prefer.
Okay.
All right, so I am Wendy Cuslosi. I am a Siren resident, is that, did you need more than that? Siren resident, I am not, um, I do not have children in the school um, any longer, however I did, um, for a number of years for children. Um, so. Dear Board and Administration, I come to you with all due respect and concern, as I have since day one, a year ago after the sexual assaults. I am not alone, so many have come forward to express their concerns over many issues. We have begged and pleaded on behalf of our children, along with the grave concern that this district is in financially. We are not the enemy. We want the best for our kids and their education. But that is simply not happening here any longer. You can keep on denying, blame shifting, and deflecting if you so choose, but let me tell you something. Forty-one students did not re-enter this school for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. Two more added to that today, started at Frederick. So that is forty-three students. Now, did you hear me? Forty-three students. Not ten, not twenty, but forty-three students in one year's time. Now, how do you want to look at that? How do you want to deflect that? Because you can't. Do you understand what those numbers are saying? Well, let me help you. Parents are fed up. Our kids are not safe here anymore. The administration and the board have not listened to parents or the community. You are not truthful nor transparent. You do not follow the law mandated reporting, nor do you rebuke or correct the situations at hand. Nor apologize to those that you have victimized by not following the law. You are not accountable. And when we've tried to hold you responsible, you are silent. Parents have spoken loud and clear for a few years' time, and now they've spoken in action and in truth. They've opened to three other local schools. How embarrassing. Especially when you've all had it in your power to change this, but you don't. Drastic measures need to be taken here because it's going to end up being too late if it really isn't already. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
You do want to be for it?
I am Krista Mathen, and I did have four students who went here. Unfortunately, they went here one year, and that was only last year. We've always lived in the Siren School District, and I chose to enroll for ten years previous to last year, and I came in in the very wrong year to come in. Um, so first of all, I would like to start out with saying to the parents within this district, you are able to do open enrollment today. You don't have to wait until April and then wait until next year, you can pull your student tomorrow and go to a different school district. I did open enrollment to Frederick for ten years, loved that school. But I didn't know you could just pull your kids in the middle of the year, I wish I knew this last year. As my four students would not have been here last year, most definitely, very early on, I would have pulled them. I was so selfish, thinking that I should just try to have my children in Siren, our home district since their birth, to save myself the time and the money driving them to a different district. You can pull them from Siren tomorrow and be in a different district within days. Reach out to me if you have any questions on the process, or if you need help transporting your students. There are quite literally great schools surrounding Siren District in every direction, and families transport their children every single day, we'll call it all carpool. I personally drive two hours every single day just to ensure that my children are taken care of. And the peace of mind that comes with that is absolutely priceless. I was never given a survey as to why families left, so it amazes me that the reasons were given to all the families or for all the families. On top of my reasons, which would take longer than the five minutes I was previously allowed for public comment to state, is lack of accountability, lack of qualified administration, lack of caring from the school board, and that doesn't mean everybody. We've got some new people that are making some waves, and hopefully, I really hope that you can save it, I really hope that you can. I've seen the difference that you have made, I truly have. But is it enough? No. Lack of caring, lacking, lacking, lacking in every single direction, and quite frankly, the school needs to be shut down, enough is enough. Let the remaining children that are still in this school have the opportunity of a real education where they have actual licensed teachers. Without this school board throwing up its hands and saying enough is enough and filing with the state to step in, it's only costing every student in this district that attends this district a true education. And lastly, as an advocate for child victims of sexual assault. I had multiple children sit on the other side of a desk from me last year, not only the students that you know about, that told me of the trauma that happened in this school. And I'm absolutely appalled because you guys do nothing for them, nothing. There's no services, there's no support, that's across the board for sexual assault victims, domestic assault victims, and children who have drugs presented to them in the school. It's a shame, thank you.
Thanks for your remarks, Krista. Anyone else I wish to speak? Okay. Any input from the board at this time? Moving on to the treasurer's report. Treasurer's report, September twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to accept the treasurer's report. I'll second that.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Jamie to accept the treasurer's report for September twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, say aye, aye, opposed? Approval of proposed, sorry, approval of proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. This would be the one that's going tonight, is that?
The purple's on yet.
I'm saying what?
The purple's budget.
Yes.
No, not for later. There's an original budget that changed after the tax letting.
Okay.
This is the one that went to favor, that's for the annual fee.
Oh.
But we had that committee, committee of the whole, right?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
I will second that.
Motion by myself, signed by Katie, all those in favor, say aye, aye, opposed? Short-term borrowing. I assume we're looking to put just a number in this?
Yes. So the two recommendations were five hundred and seven hundred and fifty thousand, correct?
Debbie said a couple of seven fifty, just the same size.
And we won't have to use it all.
No. We hope.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve for the seven hundred and fifty thousand for short-term borrowing.
I'll second.
So this is to help cover payroll and whatnot until we get taxes in again?
Yeah, so December and the first part of January.
I still confused with why we need so much.
That's significantly less, so seven hundred and fifty thousand is about half, little under half, or a little bit over half of what we approved last year, which was.
Correct, but we didn't have the two million dollar loan last year.
No, but we still, even with that two million dollar loan that will pay off the other payments, we still may have to short-term borrow every single year. And again, it's not uncommon, Grantsburg just approved their short-term borrowing, I believe it was like four million dollars. So this is, the short-term borrowing is something that.
Yeah.
Okay.
They are in a significantly different situation than we are right now, I would like to amend it to the five hundred thousand. I don't know if you're willing to accept that as friendly amendment or not, or if somebody is going to second your motion.
Well, we have a motion for seven nine fifty, does anyone wish to second it? Does anyone wish to second it? Does anyone wish to second it? Do we have a new motion?
Should we split it? Splitting it be a better, I mean, I don't know, I don't love the seven fifty, I don't like, this is all a hot mess.
Are you thinking of less than the five hundred thousand?
No, I'm thinking between five and seven fifty.
Oh. I don't know, let's see how it goes, I'll make a motion that we, uh, do the five hundred thousand.
That's fine, that's what Laura thought we would be able to have, it was Debbie that was suggesting to go higher, that bared. So you looking at our numbers had thought five hundred would be fine. So I'll make, I'll second the motion.
Yeah, motion by Polly, seconded by Katie to make the amount five hundred thousand in short-term borrowing by community bank. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, aye. So that's four, four, and one against. Motion passes. President's report and correspondence. Um. I just want to say, it's amazing how much, like, the community has come together to help out the elementary this year, I had uh, not just conferences that I attended, but that others attended that said, it sounded like teachers were getting more support, uh, than they've ever gotten before. Um, that they've got assistance, they've got paras, they've got all uh, sorts of community members and staff members coming out to help them, and I just think it's awesome to hear, and I'm hoping that, um, it's just the light that's gonna start to get brighter as the future goes on. Yeah. But that. Reports from the superintendent, deferred, reports from principals, deferred, reports from special education director, deferred, Native American report, policy eight eight six and rule eight eight six hearing.
I didn't catch this earlier, but, uh, it should actually, we changed it last year, it should be policy three forty-two point six.
I was.
We can change it at this point?
Three forty-two point six, right?
It had been eight eight six up until last year, I don't know if you guys remember.
Yes.
Okay.
All the same though, right, just different policy. It's the same.
So the policy is just the same, so every year, um, Impact Aid requires us to ask for a public hearing to see if anybody wants to change, so I sent the policy as well as our programming to the admin assistant of the Sinclair Tribe. I emailed and posted, um, asking for any input, I haven't received any written input as of now, um. I did send out a needs assessment, so I will share the results of that next month, but so at this time, I'm asking if, um, anybody in the public um, wants to comment on the policy. If not, then we move ahead to, but we have to approve every year.
Any significant, not any changes from last.
No changes, we're just trying to get input every year on the policy, um, and especially with tribal council changing.
Okay.
Um, it's just how they would like to have information shared, but.
Um, it's just how they would like to have information shared with them is mostly the, the hardest part.
And you said you didn't get anything in writing? Did you get any verbal comment? Nothing?
No, so I always ask for, you know, if you'd like to email me or talk to me in person, you know, call me or email me. I haven't got anything from there.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
The motion by Polly, seconded by Katie to approve policy three forty two point six. All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed. Motion passes. Now looking for a motion to approve the regular school board meeting minutes for September twenty second, twenty twenty five.
I will second that.
And I do have one question, I guess, for admin, and that is I know that it's in there that the teachers got an even amount to put toward their classrooms from the
Dunk yard.
The Dunk Yard Bar thing. Were they ever informed of that?
No, I didn't.
Okay, can we let them know soon, please?
I did put it in there.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, appreciate that. We have motion by Polly, seconded by Katie to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed. Motion to approve the minutes for Committee of the Whole for October twentieth, twenty five.
I would also move that.
And I'll second it.
And again, I have one question on that. Dan's not here tonight, but I was wondering if, um, we had been watering those drains for that smell and stuff. Have we applied to the village to get that, any of that reimbursed? Because that's gonna be reflected on our water bill. He was asking people to leave the water running and flushing.
I don't know how long he actually let that run, maybe fifteen minutes and that. I don't think he, we made any, like, he didn't bring that to me.
Oh, well, he said at the, he said I've asked the teachers to let him run, so I didn't know how long it was either.
I wasn't aware of how long it actually ran. You think there's?
Well, somebody can just maybe pay attention and see if it's significantly different than a month, you know.
Yeah, we'll watch the bills, but it, it did.
How much water he's been doing on the grass. And.
Okay.
Football water goes out and stays on for all of their practice, so.
So you don't think this is making a difference now?
I don't think it was.
Okay. I just was curious, cause I know that that's an option for other situations.
Be a good one to ask.
I know, and it was only fifteen minutes.
Yeah, it was about fifty.
Yeah, and I, when he said he asked him to leave him on, I just.
Alright, so we have a motion by Polly, seconded by Katie to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed. Looking for a motion to approve the special board meeting minutes for October twenty first, twenty twenty five. I'll make that motion. Motion by myself, seconded by Amy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed. Alright. Onto new business. Volleyball, the state volleyball tournament.
Make the motion to approve their request to attend the state tournament.
Okay.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Polly. All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed. Uh, invitation to bid snow plowing. What more information do we get?
Nate did follow up with a phone call with me as well, and he just kind of explained that those are the prices for the two trucks. They'll make a decision as to what vehicles to bring out as how much snow fell. Um, and that the, uh, the skid steer although costs more in the loader, but it goes faster. So he charges a percentage of that. If it's a hundred and twenty five for the hour and it was out for a half hour, we'd get charged half that amount.
That's funny, because Dan said the opposite. Said it takes longer with the skid steer.
Well, just a skid steer running back and forth, but if he brings out the loader or they're using the skid with the truck on top of it. I think the skid can get in and, and move the bigger piles out of the way. That helps things up and if they have a bigger snow bucket on there and if they're actually using the loader compared to the skid steer.
So I think Dan, when he did it here, we took a year where we didn't use a plow company. We did it in-house and Dan primarily used the skid steer and it did take quite a long time.
Yeah.
But he didn't, and he did the lots. He didn't use a truck or anything bad to push. So I, I mean, that did take a long time. And he just used the, the skid steer exclusively for that.
So based on these, is that initial bid that was tracks, I believe?
Yep.
Does that continue to be the lowest? And we've used them before and the only issue was the time they did it, correct? And that would be fixed.
We've never used the Jacques.
Yeah, we've used just, just Skoka in the past.
Just told, yes.
No, she's saying that the one issue with tracks.
Tracks.
Yeah, it was that they weren't always.
Is there a hundred dollars where DeJoc for the same plow truck is ninety five? So they're not.
They're only giving us one option ba-, well, I don't know. It doesn't say, but.
I don't think he, he has just a truck. He does the hangar too.
Right, their truck just the truck. Is slightly less.
Yep.
But then the skid steer.
But it'd be faster.
More.
And they bring out both. Uh, Nate said they, uh, they, depending on the amount of snow that's there, they would have more than one vehicle come out if needed, so more than one.
And there was some reliability accountability issues with tracks getting here on time, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I remember that, but they had indicated that that was all they would do it differently, I thought, after Dan said something.
Dan just told them to come back last year.
At a different time, because the buses were lining up. So he had to make him leave and then come back.
And then didn't they come and plow at one time when it wasn't needed or something? They were just late. It's just a one year contract, right? I don't know how much snow we get.
Right, could use a lot of it or not a lot of it? I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, approve DeJoc as the.
I'll second that.
Winter care company.
We have a motion by Katie, seconded by Jamie to accept the bid from the DeJoc company for the snow plowing. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed. Motion passed. Seclusion restraint.
This is not necessarily an action item, but I do need to share the seclusion and restraint report with the school board annually. So this is for the twenty four, twenty five school year.
Is the school still taking part in the DPI training?
Yes, we had one here for a multitude of staff. I think I had twenty two staff that participated on October tenth. And our building administrators or something.
Remind me what seclusions are?
Seclusions are when we need to remove students from regular ed population due to safety reasons. We try not to. But if they are injuring people or those kinds of things, we sometimes have to move them to a place that's a little less stimulating.
So is it the special ed room or is it a timeout room?
That depends on the person.
Okay, that's, I think that, that was kind of the clarification.
How do you decide if they have a disability or not? This is a physical disability or is it a mental disability?
It's all disabilities.
It's all disabilities. So it's students with IEPs versus students that don't have IEPs is kind of what it.
I guess, just knowing, like, so is this just a one time thing or is this numerous, so it was numbered, seclusion's only seven, so there was only seven that occurred last year in elementary?
Correct.
Yeah, so there were three total students that were involved in seven.
But if I look at said notes of said student, I feel like there was a daily removal from classroom. So maybe I just need to get better clarification on where I'm understanding what's going on.
If it's part of their IEP to be removed from the classroom for behavior, does it count as a seclusion?
If it depends on how it's written in the IEP.
Yeah.
If it is written as part of a behavior plan that they need to go to a non-stimulating environment in order to calm down. That does not necessarily count because it is part of a behavior plan.
So these are only ones that aren't involving an IEP?
The students without disabilities are the ones without IEPs.
The students with disabilities include IEPs.
But their IEP doesn't include removing them to a behavior.
Yeah.
Are these numbers compared to last year?
Um, they might be up a couple from last year, but it's not by much. One or two maybe. I think it's fewer students, but I think it's a few more incidents on the seclusion side of things.
We don't have to take any action on this. Any further comments in regards to this from the board? Thank you, Denise.
Alright, one more thing on that. So anytime a parent is called to pick up their child, is that seclusion?
I don't call students to pick up their child. That's not my decision.
You don't call parents, yeah.
I don't call parents to pick up a child.
Okay.
That is not my, that is not my role.
Okay, but is, I'm not asking whose role it is. Is that considered seclusion? Does DPI consider that?
I would have to check on that. I don't know right off the top of my head.
I, I would like you to check on that, please.
Yeah.
Cause that would significantly alter those numbers.
Alright. Thank you for that point, Polly. Moving on. Let's see here, meeting calendars for November.
Finish the business.
Oh, sorry, I forgot. The new business, we added those three things. So first, I'm looking for a motion to accept the retirement of, uh, Jill Tinman.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Jamie. All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed. Motion to accept the resignation of John Tinman.
Retirement.
Retirement, sorry. Retirement.
They're listed as the same these days. I agree with you.
Difference to me.
I agree with you.
Retirement, not resignation.
I'll make that decision. I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Katie, seconded by Amy. All those in favor say aye, aye. Now it's resignation of Ben Coning, IT coordinator.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Polly. All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed. Okay, sorry about that. Now we're onto the meeting calendars.
Is there any update on that position? Sorry, sorry, who, who seconded?
With Ben, it was Polly.
Thank you. Excuse me, Ben.
No, no problem. And I, I didn't mean to interrupt either. It just says end update, so I didn't know if there was a end up.
I, I have just some information. I'm meeting with a neighboring district tomorrow. I just don't wanna say anything yet, just because we're considering sharing, potentially sharing. An IT director, it's great, great opportunity. Um, then I've got, um, two others who have reached out to me that I've solicited as vendors. Um, that are working on rates. One is gonna work on a daily rate. The other one is gonna work on an overall, um, list of, of specs that I had given them that it, they had asked for. So I have two that are currently gonna be providing me with, um, numbers this, this week. Um, but I also have two more. One came in last week. I just don't wanna mention names and open right now. So they, they came in and did a, a facility analysis, and so then they're gonna provide a code for us based on that analysis. And then I have one more that met with us who we currently work with, who is sending an individual in on November tenth. And in the meantime, um, Ben said he would still continue to support us. I gave him the same information today. He's like, great, you know. So he'll work with us as long as, um, we can, but there's also other options with some of these vendors to potentially negotiate and look at other scenarios. For example, you know, having somebody here on a certain amount of time, like there's a number of days if we reduce that or just depends on what the needs are. I think the main thing is the infrastructure being supported. I think all the companies can do that and do it well. It's just a matter of our needs. It's, to me, the Chromebooks seems to be the biggest headache, I guess, because they break and they need to be repaired and they need sometimes to be sent in. And so that requires uh, time hours by an individual to work that. So that's kind of where we're at right now, but I'll have full information for you as soon as they provide me with the pricing and all that stuff.
So something we should be able to discuss at the next.
Yeah, we've got some interested parties. It just, it is costly and that's the thing I'm trying to work.
Oh, yeah.
Um, of course, I'll bring it to you for the decisions, but you guys can renegotiate or whatever you wanna do, but I'll bring the codes initially to you. And what their roles could be, cause a lot of it is remote. And they just sometimes, sometimes they want hands and eyes for them, so they can do it. That would mean we would need like a, like an aide or somebody here. Others will just send somebody a certain amount of time per week. So those things are just different. So you'll have to, when I bring these to you, and they're even willing to come, by the way, to the board, to talk, to address the board.
Okay.
So.
Sounds good. Thank you for the update. Okay, on the calendars. Committee of the Whole meeting, we have it scheduled tangibly for November tenth twenty twenty five at five P M. Is that still good for everyone? And then regular school board meeting for Monday, November seventeenth, due to the holiday break, of course. Um, at five P M. Everyone still on board with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then I would like to have a budget working meeting. So we can uh, discuss what next year is gonna look like for the school and start to formulate some things. Um, does the eleventh work for people or not?
Probably not for me if I'm going to James's game, middle school boys game.
And what about the third?
Monday the third will work better, but I mean, I guess if I'm not here the eleventh and it works best for the rest of you, I can do either one.
The eleventh is Veterans Day and it doesn't work for me now looking at my calendar. Um, the third does work.
Yeah, I was wondering about the holiday and all that, but.
I mean, that's a week from now. Is that enough time for what you guys have?
I don't know if any of you need us there.
It's not really about them, it's more our discussion in regards to things.
Um, do you want admin or like principals there? Who do you want at this meeting or who needs to be there?
It's mainly just us that's gonna be talking about things at this one.
Okay.
Cause then we can formulate what stuff we wanna get answers for, cause they might not be able to have it on hand at the time. And then we can go from there. So.
Board working meeting.
So, uh, five o'clock, four o'clock.
Either one works, should work for me.
I can make either work.
We got requests for five, so.
And hopefully that'd work for Kelly, she's and Cory may be better at five.
We'll let them, uh, doesn't, they'll just have to get ahold of us and let us know and we'll go from there. So at this time, uh, the budget working meeting will be November third at five P M. Uh, for the board.
Sounds good.
For approval of the bills for the cycle of nine, twenty, twenty twenty five to ten, twenty four, twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve the bill cycle.
Well, do we have a second? First before the discussion?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay. Alright.
Hey, again, they're really general qu- questions, but what is tumbleweed press?
Tumbleweed press is an. Tumbleweed press is an online. Uh. Where it reads books to the kids.
Thank you. Um. What is this MS open value subscription? It's seven five four four seven. On page five. And it's thirty seven hundred.
Oh, it's Heartland.
MS open.
MS open value.
Yes, it's our Microsoft subscription or license, I should say.
And then um this one's not very much money, I just don't have a clue with. Supplies from Pittsco, tool place, metal, toolboxes, is that maintenance or classroom?
That's classroom.
Menu planning, two thousand five hundred eighty one.
That is the serve safe. Kitchen program. They're not serve safe, healthy program.
So what does that do?
Um they, it um does all of their save reporting that they have to do as far.
Oh, it's not actual men- menu planning?
No.
Okay, cause that was very.
No.
But I imagine there could be part of it, I mean, cause they have to have so much whole wheat each week and.
Right, but people do that all the time, and nursing homes and schools and hospitals and.
They enter in the meal and then it breaks it down like how many grams of protein and how many, how much wheat is in it?
We'll see how we do that. Um is it, when it just says key fob, is that like a replacement for a lost fob, is that, what is that? Or is this ordering twenty new key fobs?
Or, yes.
Page seven, that was ordering new key fob.
Yeah.
And then CS eleven professional development, we had talked about professional development being frozen at some point. What what was this?
They have like, I think each period or each. Elementary has like five hundred dollars, the high school has five hundred.
Part of the CSA contract, I believe.
And then also grants.
Is that like to go to like a one day thing at at CSA?
Yeah.
That's.
Um I'm wondering if that's not the American Indians Study Summer Institute, which is um should be entered for the junior grant.
How many people attended? That hasn't been it, yeah.
Oh, okay, nevermind.
There are some that the restorative.
Meaningful connections? Okay, okay. And then again, I noted that there were almost four hundred dollars in leaholmes, but other than that. Those are my questions.
I have a quick question, it's John, probably answer this, why is it not, wait, what's the wording here, for the refs? Why is it change different amounts per game? Like there's two different.
Like a head official versus a.
No, I don't think it's, I think it's varsity versus middle school.
One, one was state playoff, probably.
No, it's for you guys, like when you, your group, I think it's for middle school, there's two different amounts, you guys get.
I have no idea, the answer to your question, I can't answer your question, I don't know why it's any.
Okay.
Mileage.
Their home games.
We did mileage from middle school, so I can't speak to that.
Okay. Hmm. I just, I mean, it's not a big difference, I just see there's a difference, but then I was like.
Might be junior high, those are different prices too.
Middle school versus.
So middle school is one amount and junior high is another amount, so if that's, I don't know where.
What's the difference between middle school and junior high, isn't it both?
I mean, that's, I'm saying junior, junior varsity, so junior varsity and junior higher.
Yeah. And then. That's what it, okay, that's what it could be.
Probably is.
Right.
Where you're.
Maybe, did we have, well, I guess I don't know how many nights that was, I'd have to, cause there wasn't many JV games, okay.
That's our. Painted from September, so that gives a date of the game.
Right, I know, I was looking at that, cause sometimes I get, well, that wasn't even the most.
And just a quick question, like the uh DJ for homecoming and.
Right.
The flowers for parents' night volleyball, those come out, they're programs, right?
They grant paid for, I think, yep, why would we see paid for the DJ?
Okay. Alright, any further comments or questions? There is none. Uh motion before is approve the bills for the cycle nine twenty 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 five to ten twenty four twenty twenty five. All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed. Pass.
Shoot, I forgot, there should have been something else on this. Boys and boys basketball update for sports basketball girls.
No, he, Carson's still working on it.
Okay, so this time we have to suspend. That monthly meeting until after the annual budget and uh annual meeting. Looking for a motion to, or yeah, looking for a motion to suspend the meeting until after.
Need to suspend it or is it done?
Yes.
It's okay, Darren, okay, so it's fine.
We just got through all the items.
Yep.
Okay. Uh I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor suspending the regular meeting until after the budget and annual meeting say aye, aye. We are suspended for now.
Well, I mean, I would like, until six o'clock, I think six forty five.
Yeah, four forty five is the budget meeting, seven is the annual meeting.
I think it'd be great if they could do another, they, I don't know if you've ever been to it, I know like we did a tour. Like go through the facility, I think it'd be good for us, cause I've never been to the shop, like as we look into like brainstorming. It may look like for our class, for our, what would potentially offer our students. For some of us who haven't seen.